This is my call to order this meeting of the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board. I am Jason Cooper, the Chair. Today is May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three. About six forty-three P. M. Started a little late. So first order of business is to have a. Oh, I guess we're going to have a roll call first.
John DeGrand.
Present.
Terry Yatwell on Zoom.
Here.
Donna Getzmann on Zoom. Is absent. David Wolf is absent. Randy Hutchins is absent. Jason Cooper.
Here.
Becky Barton on Zoom.
Here.
Brian Walker.
Here.
Darren Schaefer is not present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, can we have the statement for hybrid and in-person virtual meetings read?
This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note this meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call nine one three seven one five nine six six six. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or telephone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead, note for the record that you agree with a previous individual's comments. The chair may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. For board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that people attending via Zoom can hear you and so the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, next item is, do we have any adds? Deletes, revisions for the agenda items, and I do know we have one under Board Reports. Item number B, the zoning board consolidation report. It's been asked that we move that to the to the other business section, section six, to facilitate letting all the application, we covered all the applications because we have a pretty full agenda this evening. Anything else? We have any changes, deletes? Okay. Any disclosures of conflicts of interest?
None.
All right, any disclosure of external contacts or discussions?
Hey, Jason, this is Terry.
Yes, Terry.
Sorry, I couldn't get my darn thing unmuted. A is being rescheduled, is that correct?
No, item B.
No, A.
A. Apparently, it looks like it is.
It has been rescheduled to this meeting.
Oh, it was, it was a.
Previous meeting.
Okay.
Okay, well, if you're hearing A this evening, I will recuse myself.
Okay.
On A. So I don't want there to be any type of conflict. So I think if I voted on that, I would create a conflict. So I will step out on A.
That's okay. Do you note it?
Mr. Chairman, if we do have, as long as Ms. Atwell is a part of the meeting, if she's abstaining, we still have a quorum, so that's fine.
Yes, we have a quorum for the meeting. She didn't vote on that one particular item.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Yep, I just won't vote. I'll abstain from voting on A, so.
Yes, on that, on on option A or item A.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Approval of the meeting minutes from April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three? If everybody's agrees with those minutes, and there isn't any corrections or anything like that, would entertain a motion to approve them.
Brian Walker moved to approve the minutes of April twenty-sixth.
Okay, Brian Walker makes a motion.
John DeGrand second.
John DeGrand seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All in favor, all all opposed, same sign? Okay, minutes, the motion for the minutes approval passes. Next item are the board reports, so we'll just do items A and C, and I assume Mr. Penley will be doing that report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Penley, planning staff. The only item to note for the Board of County Commissioners' actions was the previous application for this board in the March meeting was a final development plan for the Amazon facility at New Century Air Center, two seven two zero zero West, one hundred and fifty-seventh Street. If you recall, there was a case for site improvements for that development. That was recommended for approval by this board, and that case is scheduled for Board of County Commissioners' actions for tomorrow morning's meeting here in this meeting room. No other items at this time for Board of County Commissioners' actions. Then they could mention for planning commission actions. We had a planning commission meeting last night, May twenty-third, and the item that was considered on the regular agenda for that meeting was the public hearing for the update to the rural comprehensive plan, specifically the northwest area, which formerly referred to as the Sunflower Area Plan. The planning commission did consider the recommended update to our comprehensive plan and did recommend approval of the update to the rural policy area in that that planning area. That case will be now scheduled for Board of County Commissioners' meeting on June twenty-second for adoption. And there were other updates we had for the airport compatibility plans for both New Century Air Center and Executive Airport, and that was all for planning commission actions. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Penley. Move on. Okay, business for the board. Application S W twenty-three dash two seven five dash P P slash F A G A. One five two three six Lake Road twelve. Assume it's at Gardner Lake.
Good evening, Michelle Lineiger, County Planning Staff. This application is actually three applications for rezoning preliminary final plat for three residential lots. This map shows the location of the parcels outlined in blue, which is east of Gardner Lake. The slide shows a close-up of the properties along with the surrounding zoning. It's actually five parcels and part of them is zone P R U one B, which is in the yellow. And then the green is R U R, which is rural. The R U R sections around the lake are, which we see this very often. This, these are lake parcels that the owners have purchased from the city of Gardner. So once they're turned over to private parties, the R U R zoning becomes in effect, it's kind of a default district. So that's what we're addressing with the rezoning is getting all five of those parcels to be one zoning district.
Michelle, Brian Walker, so that has been acquired from the city?
Yes.
Land?
Yes. As you can see, the P R U one B is consistent with the surrounding area, and it is also consistent with the character of the neighborhood. This is a preliminary plat, and you can see the existing structures noted on this. Because of some of the locations of the buildings, the original platted lot sizes, and orientations of the lots, each lot will need exceptions from the standards of the P R U one B district and the subdivision regulations. Again, we see this often out at Gardner Lake, being that the original platted lots are pretty small. So going through each lot, this is proposed lot one. It includes an existing house and two existing accessory buildings. This lot requires an exception for the front yard setback and rear yard setback for the house, and then a front yard setback for the accessory structure. This is proposed lot two. There's one accessory building on this on this lot, and that will need a rear yard setback. The front yard of this lot is actually along Gardner East Road versus Lake Road twelve. So that that should become part being in the backyard. And then the proposed lot three includes an existing house, and this lot requires an exception for lot area, front yard setback, and lot width. Additionally, a minimum infrastructure waiver is required for a type B collector. The minimum infrastructure requires that Gardner East Road be improved to the type B standards. Staff and public work staff have, are in support of this waiver due to the limited use of Gardner East Road. It's very more of a residential collector versus something that is getting a lot more use because it's very much out of the way. Additionally, the the lots have access to Lake Road twelve, which will help have moving that turning movement off of Gardner East Road onto that other road. And then here is the final plat with basically the clean version. You can see the three lots, and then the floodplain identified on the north end is what that hatching is. There's some right away being dedicated along Gardner East Road and also some easements being dedicated. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning, the preliminary final plat, and the exceptions for the plat as discussed. And then staff also recommends approval of the waiver from the minimum infrastructure requirement. And here's a suggested motion. I just want to note there's two of them, so there will need to be two separate actions.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff?
Brian Walker.
Yeah, go right in.
So this currently is, this is just a rezoning. These lots already exist? We're just combining?
Um, let me get back to this here. So this is the makeup today. So you can see my pointer. This and this are owned by the same people, so in order to combine them, they need to have the same zoning district. And then this is and then this is actually one piece. It gets real thin right here, which is owned by this property owner, and it's the same idea. So there's, there's.
That covers my question. I, originally, we're fifty foot along the water, and so that corner must just be a unique.
Yeah, that one's a little different, being that it's kind of at the end of the one piece of the lake.
Okay, do we have any other questions for staff? Okay. Does the applicant want to make a statement or agree with staff or?
Both property owners, the Bennekes and the Steele are both here, and they have said they.
I'm gonna say, if you're in agreement with staff, then, you know, that's, that's, okay, he says, sounds good, okay. All right, well, then, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, discussions about this amongst the board? Do we have any members of the public that want to make any comment on this particular application? Looks like not anybody, and nobody on Zoom, I take it? No, okay. Then I would entertain a motion if somebody would do so. Actually, there's two motions. I guess we should do it in two separate motions. So on motion, there would be motion one and motion two.
Okay, John DeGrand. I move to approve the rezoning from P R U one B and R U R districts to P R U one B district for the reasons listed in the staff report.
Okay.
Professor Barton second.
You got a second for Becky Barton? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terry Atwell, I'm gonna abstain.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Mr. Penley, when will that appear before the Board of?
Second motion.
Oh, sorry. Well, there's that one. Okay, then we need a second motion, absolutely.
Okay, John DeGrand again. I move to approve preliminary and final plats for three residential lots be known as Steel Waters, with the plat exceptions as outlined in the staff report, and to approve the requested minimum infrastructure waiver for the reasons and subject to stipulations recommended by staff and solicited in the report.
Brian Walker, second.
We have a motion from John and a second from Brian, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Terry Atwell abstain again.
And all opposed, same sign? All right, second motion carries. And so, yes.
Mr. Chair, I can make, we didn't know that this application will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at the meeting on June twenty-second at nine thirty a.m. in this board hearing room, one eleven South Cherry Street in Olathe.
All right, well, thank you. All right. Next, next application is S W twenty-three dash two nine zero dash F P G A. It's one hundred and fifty-first Street and Gardner Road. And staff, I assume has a presentation.
Yes, Michelle Lineiger, County Planning Staff. This is a application for a final plat for a phase, a second phase of Mulberry Hills Estate. This phase is twelve lot, single-family lots located north and east of Gardner Road and one hundred and fifty-first Street. Here's the final plat. This is actually a re-review. This phase of this subdivision was originally approved in two thousand twenty, and the plat expired before it was recorded. So we're just re-reviewing this and getting moving on it again. It is consistent with the preliminary plat plat and the previously approved final plat. Staff does recommend approval of the final plat for the twelve lot residential subdivision to be known as Mulberry Hills Estate second plat, subject to the requirements outlined in the staff report. And then there's a suggested motion. I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Applicant have a statement to read or just agree with staff?
J. Odell, Aubrey Enterprises, six zero three six Metcalf Avenue. On behalf of Dale Klasmyer, who's the owner, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for their time. Normally, that's part of a standard just script that I have, but we can tell, you know, today it's important because I don't want to have to explain why it got delayed a week, a month, because we didn't have a quorum. So thank you again. I'd also like to thank staff. Like I said, this one was originally approved in May of two thousand twenty, so there was some interesting things going on there, so there were some unusual difficulties that we had, so they've helped us through that and made sure that we can get it right for this time, so. Yeah, I'll stand for any questions.
Would have any questions? Yeah, I would, you know, since this has already been approved once, I think it's a well, super, there's not, there's nothing new here to, you know, throw as a curveball or.
We're glad we had a quorum.
Yeah, so.
I buy it every day I look forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, are there in staff or the the board have any discussion about it? Want to have any discussion about it? You're okay with it? Do we have any members of the public that want to make a comment on this application? Either on Zoom or or here? Okay, good. All right, then, then I will entertain a motion to approve this.
Terry Atwell, I can make the motion. I recommend to recommend approval of application S W twenty-three dash two nine zero dash F P G A, a final plat for a twelve lot residential subdivision to be known as Mulberry Hills Estates. Second plat with recommendations and for the reasons recommended by staff.
All right. Have motion Terry Atwell?
Brian Walker, second.
Second for Brian Walker. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And again, Mr. Penley, when when will that appear before the board?
Thank you, Chairman Sean Penley. This application will be considered for final action at the Board of County Commissioners' meeting on June twenty-second at nine thirty a.m. in the board hearing room, one eleven South Cherry Street, Olathe. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Penley. Okay. Item number C, application S W twenty-three dash two nine one dash F D P G A, one hundred and fifty-ninth and Claire Road. And it's like Michelle has a presentation from staff. For Diane, sorry.
Good evening, Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. For this application, for this item, the applicant is Van Trust Real Estate Development on behalf of Johnson County Airport Commission, and the landowner is Johnson County. The current zoning on the property is the P E C Logistics Park District zoning, which is one of our industrial zoning districts. The site is currently vacant, and the site has been graded as part of the New Century Commerce Center development. The site area size for building B two is eighteen point six six acres. So the applicant is requesting a final development plan for building B two for the New Century Commerce Center, the east area plan. Two industrial warehouses are currently under construction as part of Phase One for the New Century Commerce Center. This proposed final development plan is for the third building, building B two, which will be about three hundred and thirty thousand square feet in size, and it'll be, is the third building to fill out this portion of Phase One of this, of the Commerce Center. The proposed building has the office area of the building facing north and dock doors facing south, and the exterior wall colors and panel design match building A, which is the first building that's been under construction. And just kind of a brief reminder, the rezoning and preliminary development plan for the New Century Commerce Center was approved in November of two thousand twenty-one. And then in February of two thousand twenty-two, the final development plan for the Phase One infrastructure improvements was approved. And then finally, in April of last year, the final development plans for buildings A and B one were approved. And so this is just, again, showing the location of the New Century Commerce Center, and in particular, building two, which will be at about Claire Road and what will be one hundred and sixty-fifth Street. There's an aerial view of the surrounding area, and you can see the building two is going to be south of that building B one. Here's the original approved preliminary development plan, just kind of the overall plan for Phase One. And that's changed slightly. And then here's kind of the revised preliminary development plan showing those three buildings, building A, B one, and then this current request for building B two. And then here's the final development plan, the layout for building B two. And then this is the proposed landscaping plan that we'll talk about in a little bit, and then here's the elevation drawings, kind of the north and south side. And then here's the kind of showing the elevations of the in-walls. So just a few highlights on the minimum infrastructure requirements. So in terms of the roads, the proposed building will be accessed from the new Collector Street, John Glenn Parkway, which will connect to, which connects to one hundred and fifty-nine Street. So the applicant submitted a revised traffic study, which has to be done at each time they come in for for a final development plan for a new building. And that just evaluates potential street improvements. And so the revised traffic study has been reviewed and accepted by Johnson County Public Works. The revised traffic study does show and recommend a northbound left turn lane along Claire Road at one hundred and sixty-fifth Street due to the additional trips expected with this proposed building. And so you'll see a stipulation about that, those improvements. And then in terms of stormwater, the revised stormwater study has been reviewed, and the applicant is working with Johnson County Public Works on some some additional changes to that stormwater study. And so well, you'll see a revision on a stipulation that just says that those changes need to be done prior to issuance of the building permit. And so in terms of the final development plan, I think I mentioned earlier, so the total area of the building is three hundred and thirty thousand square feet. The site plan shows two hundred and two vehicle parking spaces, seventy-nine trailer parking spaces, and the height of the building is fifty feet, and it's will be constructed of tilt-up concrete wall panels with textured paint. In terms of parking, the proposed building is speculative, and a tenant or user has not been identified yet. So parking requirements will be will be reviewed at the time of the building permit. And then just kind of also a reminder that as part of that, the approval of the preliminary development plan for the overall Commerce Center, there was a stipulation that was approved that provided for parking deferral because of the nature of the warehouse buildings and needing less parking requirements. The plans also show landscaping and screening around on the northeast and west sides of the building, which does comply with screening requirements. There's two driveway entrances that are shown off of John Glenn Parkway to access the building. The building also includes. Uh, the building also includes some wall lighting and the light fixtures will be fully shielded. Um, there's also, uh, the site plan shows, uh, light poles for the parking areas. Those are approximately thirty feet tall and also proposed, um, those light fixtures will be fully shielded as well. Um, and the, uh, the lighting plan does show lighting levels to be within the range allowed by the regulations. Plan also shows a proposed monument sign, uh, for the building at the southwest corner of the site. And, uh, that proposed sign will be constructed in accordance with the approved site plans, um, that the board might remember, um, approving those sign plans here for the Commerce Center, uh, probably a few months ago. Um, and then, um, as I mentioned, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about changing, uh, revising, um, I think the applicant's applicant, um, is going to request to revise a stipulation also for, um, for the landscaping. And then, uh, finally, just to, to note that the, um, that this development, um, has shown some changes from the approved preliminary development plan to, to this FDP. Um, and, uh, those are changes in building size, um, orientation and some minor changes to, to parking spaces. Um, and planning staff has determined that the, those proposed changes are considered minor and that those changes are still in substantial compliance with the preliminary development plan. Um, at the end of the report, you'll see, um, and, uh, some attached memos from Public Works, uh, Johnson County Wastewater, Water District Seven and City of Alata. And then the building code department, um, just stated that, um, you know, obviously the building will comply with building and fire code requirements. Um, and so planning staff does recommend approval of this final development plan for building B two. And, um, uh, there's some reasons stated on page, uh, fourteen for approval, and then there's also suggested motion on page fourteen, uh, if the board wishes to, uh, to use that. And then, um, so, just quickly, I think I put a handout in, on your desk here. Um, and so there's just a couple of minor revisions to stipulations. Um, so you have that handout, but I also have that up here on the screen. And so the proposed changes are for stipulation, uh, thirteen, just that minor change that I talked about earlier, taking out, um, that those, uh, kind of final revisions to the stormwater study, um, they just need to be, um, approved by, uh, Public Works and, and submitted prior to issuance of the building permit for building B two. Um, and then, uh, stipulation fourteen, um, just, uh, uh, deletes a couple of sentences there. And then uh, stipulation nineteen, uh, we're just adding, uh, a word in, and that's the, um, stipulation, uh, requiring the turn lanes for the street improvements for Claire Road. And we're just adding in saying that those, um, improvements have to be completed prior to the final occupancy permit for this building. Um, and then I'll just go ahead and mention, but I think the applicant will also mention, so back up on, um, you'll see stipulation fifteen, which is, uh, regarding landscaping. And so I think, um, the applicant's going to want to revise that a little bit. So, if you look at the landscaping plan, um, it shows some landscaping on the, uh, south side of the building on the south side of the parking area right here, kind of you can see that at the bottom of the screen. And so, um, I think the request will be to, um, uh, delete that landscaping that's shown. Um, and instead, uh, show, uh, landscaping uh, that's talked about in that stipulation that'll be on the north side of one hundred and sixty-fifth Street, uh, but on the south side of that detention pond. Trying to find a drawing here that, um, yeah, so it would essentially kind of be, well, this doesn't really show the detention pond either, but, um, so I think the applicant will be requesting that. So, I think at this point, um, I can stop. And if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Yeah, I, Jason Cooper, um, when are they gonna, at, at what point do they, are they going to construct, construct the, uh, what is it, one hundred and sixty-fifth Street? I take it that's not part of this, it's?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, planning, uh, Sean Penley, planning. So, the, the infrastructure is actually ongoing. The applicant is constructing the infrastructure for the streets right now. One hundred and sixty-fifth Street has started construction. They'll have that complete prior to this building. So, the road will be in, the details of what the applicants want to talk about, but the app, uh, landscaping will be done concurrent with the development of the building, the street is in, they just, yeah, the, the landscaping will be done with the building.
Hmm, okay, that makes sense.
Brian Walker, um, it appears to me that the building is not meeting setbacks on the east and possibly the west side. Is that accurate?
Uh, the building does comply with the setback requirements.
And Brian Walker again, the, the landscaping, the intent of it for screening and such is not for Claire Road? It's being moved?
Um, no, so it'll be, um, so the, the landscaping here that's shown, um, that's shown on the south side of the building here, um, so so this is south side of the building here, you can see the parking. This is the proposed landscaping here where my arrow is that there, um, would request to, um, take out and then.
That would be along one hundred and sixty-fifth.
Correct, yeah. And then, um, and then in, instead of that, what they would be doing is, um, maybe this might be the best one. So, you can see one hundred and sixty-fifth Street here. And so what they're proposing is that, um, screening that line of trees that would go on the north side of one hundred and sixty-fifth Street, but it's on the south side. So, here's building two. And then there's a detention pond on the south side of the building and then one hundred and sixty-fifth Street. So, what they're proposing is the, that line of screening, um, that would be on the north side of one hundred and sixty-fifth Street on south side of the detention pond.
Understand. Yeah, Jason, Jason Cooper, it looks like screening is on Claire Road remaining. All right. Any more questions for? Diane, other staff? Hey, um, would the applicant like to speak or make a statement? Or just agree with staff or? Oh, if you can step up to the microphone so you can make it on the recording.
Justin Duff of Van Trust, forty-nine hundred Main, Kansas City, Missouri. Um, no real comment other than thank you all for being here and thank you for, um, grabbing everybody to have a quorum. We look forward to continuing what we're doing out at New Century and, uh, we appreciate your time.
All right, well, thank you. So, um, does anybody on the board have discussion or? Or not? Do we have any, do we have anybody from the public that wants to speak on this item, on this application? Either on Zoom or in person? Somebody on Zoom? All right. Okay, then, um, at this point, we could move forward with a motion.
Brian Walker, I move to recommend approval of application number SW two-three dash two nine one dash F D P for a final development plan for building B two of the New Century Commerce Center, East Area Plan, subject to the recommended stipulations and for the reasons outlined in the staff report.
Okay, Brian, Brian Walker, my motion. John DeGrande, second. Brian has second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Chairman, if I can just kind of confirm that that motion would include those uh, revised stipulations that we talked about for stipulation thirteen, fourteen, nineteen and fifteen?
Brian Walker, uh, as she just stated. Please add that to my first motion.
Add that to the motion? Should we vote, let's vote on it again.
Just amend that, it'd be a good, roll call due again.
I think catch you in time.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, thank you.
Forgot.
Um, okay. On the amended motion, uh, with all the extra stipulations brought from staff, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Amended motion carries.
And this will go to the Board of County Commissioners on, uh, June twenty-second, uh, nine thirty a.m., uh, here in this building.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item, uh, application SW twenty-three dash two nine two dash P P slash F P G A, uh, two nine two three five West one hundred and fifty-second Street. Oh, Michelle has a presentation close down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Southwest Council Day Zoning Board, Michelle Kirk with Johnson County Planning. This evening, I'd like to present case number SW two-three two-nine-two P P F P G A, a request for approval for a preliminary plat and final plat for one twenty thousand eight hundred square foot residential lot at Gardner Lake. Based on the findings of the staff report, Johnson County Planning is recommending approval of this application, subject to stipulations.
All right.
The subject property is located along one hundred and fifty-second Street at the northern end of Gardner Lake. Uh, this area might look a little familiar as the first, uh, application this evening was right across the cove. Um, along one hundred and fifty-seventh Street, uh, there are a lot of homes that directly access onto one hundred and fifty-second Street, which is a collector street in this area. This is a copy of the original plat, um, with the lots of, subject to this application outlined in red. That plat was originally court, recorded in nineteen forty-one. And the proposed plat, oh, excuse me, the end of plat proposed with this application would reconfigure two five thousand square foot platted lots, which are those, uh, two lots that are unhighlighted. That's lot, um, lots two and three that was, uh, outlined in that previous slide. One unplatted lot of seven thousand eight hundred square feet, that's the larger of the unplatted lots right along one hundred and fifty-second Street. And one unplatted lot of three thousand square feet, resulting in a lot size of twenty thousand eight hundred square feet, which is equivalent to almost a half an acre. Uh, you can see on this aerial that there is a house, uh, on this property here, but that, um, has since been, um, demolished, um, in way for the construction of a new home. This site does highlight, um, kind of the location of that former home with, home with respect to the floodplain. Approximately one-third of this property is within the floodplain for Gardner Lake. So, um, when the, uh, new home would be constructed, subject to approval of this plat, it would be, um, constructed outside of the floodplain. The subject property and surrounding parcels are zoned, primarily zoned, uh, P R U one B, which is the Planned Residential Urban Single Family when, when B District and R U R. There is one, uh, parcel there zoned R L D at the northeast corner of one hundred and fifty-second Street and Gardner East Road. And the minimum lot size in the P R U one B district is ten thousand square feet. Uh, this table, which is within your staff report, shows, um, how the proposed plat would comply with the regulations of the P R U one B district, such as minimum lot area, the width of the lot and lot depth, a lot width ratio. And as you can see, the, uh, the project before you this evening complies with all those regulations. This next, uh, table just shows what, and these setbacks and height requirements would be within the P R U one B district. Uh, staff would take a look at those with a, um, uh, with compliance, um, at the time of building permit. There's just some quick pictures of the subject property from one hundred and fifty-second Street. You can see here from one hundred and fifty-second Street facing south, you can see the cove in the background and the, uh, foundation and, um, fireplace of the property. Uh, there is also an accessory building on the east end of the lot, which you can see on the left side of the frame. This is the, uh, current driveway into the lot. There are no proposed changes to the driveway access or location, um, once a new home would be constructed. And this, uh, last picture here just highlights, um, what the current, um, configuration of one hundred and fifty-second Street. As you can see there, it is paved two-lane road, uh, with kind of the, there's somewhat of a shoulder there, kind of sloping off on the, uh, onto the subject property. Uh, this is a copy of the preliminary plat, uh, with a proposed layout. Uh, staff has reviewed the infrastructure requirements for this plat, uh, including water, roads, sanitary sewer, and did determine the plat did not meet all those requirements. And the applicant has requested an infrastructure waiver to address that. So, the applicant is requesting a waiver to the required minimum infrastructure for this project, uh, requiring external roads serving a planned urban residential district to be a minimum of one road, constructed to at least a type B collector street standard with at least four foot wide gravel shoulders to provide continuous access from the subdivision or development track to the nearest highway or to the nearest comprehensive arterial road network plan designated parkway or designate arterial street. The existing construction of one hundred and fifty-second Street does not comply with the type B collector street standard, since it lacks shoulders, um, all, all around to comply with the minimum infrastructure requirements. Uh, however, Gardner, or, excuse me, one hundred and fifty-second is paved, it is twenty-four feet wide and does provide continuous access, uh, from the lot to Gardner East Road, um, to Gardner Road and to one hundred and fifty-first. All are carnit designated arterial streets. Uh, the applicant has requested a waiver because one hundred and fifty-second Street is two-lane residential, uh, with a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit and is in good condition. And due to site topography, upgrading one hundred and fifty-second Street to a type B collector just on one-half of the hundred and thirty feet of this road would cause a considerable disruption to the neighborhood. Uh, for these reasons, uh, staff's opinion that waiving this, this requirement would not endanger the occupants of the proposed lot or motorists and the lack of compliance would not pose a threat to the health, safety or general welfare of nearby properties or the community at large. Uh, staff has consulted with Johnson County Public Works regarding the applicant's request and they do not oppose this waiver. Uh, this is a copy of the final plat, which is within the, uh, staff report packet that, that was handed out and online. And then this is just a enhanced version of that, so you can see that the, uh, single lot would be created if approved. The Johnson County's Rural Comprehensive Plan shows this property within the Garter's Urban Fringe Policy Area. Uh, the subject property meets the boundary criteria for which recognizes the proximity to existing city boundaries, the availability of central water service, the potential to economically expand or connect with planned and existing improved roads and sanitary sewers, and the reasonable expectation that adjacent cities will expand their boundaries into this area per their existing comprehensive plan. And since this is in Gardner's growth area, I did throw up here just the Gardner's Comprehensive Plan, showing that they depict this area as appropriate for low-density residential development and is considered a traditional, a traditional residential area conveying a unique community character, which contributes to the overall identity of Gardner. Uh, this is, as I've already stated, staff is recommending approval of this application before you this evening and a recommended motion should you choose to use it. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, well, thank you. All right, does the applicant, uh, want to make a presentation or just have some comments or agree with staff?
Hi, Chris Eakin, um, one-two-six-one-four Cedar Street, Leewood, Kansas. Um, no, uh, yes, no presentation. Um, no, uh, I guess no presentation, we just agree with, uh, staff comments.
All right, well, cool, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant or staff? No? All right. Uh, do we have anybody from the public that wants to make a comment about this application? Either on Zoom or here? Looks like not, okay. Then if that's the case, uh, we can, uh, I can entertain a motion.
I can do it if you need me to. Terry.
Fire away.
Okay, Terry Atwell, um, I move to approve the preliminary plat, including a minimum infrastructure waiver, to not construct one hundred and fifty-second Street to type B collector street standards, and final plat for a twenty thousand eight hundred square foot residential lot located at twenty-nine, two, thirty-five, West one hundred and fifty-second Street, to be known as Switzer Cove, for the reasons outlined in the staff report and subject to the stipulations recommended by county staff.
All right.
Brian Walker, second.
Yep, Terry Well, Atwell made the motion, Brian Walker, second, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this application will be heard at the June twenty-second Board of County Commissioner meeting, um, located at one eleven South Cherry Street, um, in this room here, third floor board hearing room, and that meeting will begin at nine thirty a.m.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, next item is the, under other business, which is the, uh, we were going to do, uh, move the zoning board consolidation report from Mr. Penley. So if you could give that to us, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Penley, planning staff. On April twenty-seventh, the Board of County Commissioners, on that committee of the whole meeting, to discuss a proposed consolidation of the Northwest and Southwest Consolidated Zoning Boards, uh, this is, um, prompted by some recent changes in, uh, the zoning board area. As you may or may not know, the City of DeSoto had a large annexation of nine thousand acres in the last year for the former Sunflower Army ammunition plant. So that, that jurisdiction for the Northwest area significantly was reduced by about a third of their total planning and zoning area. Uh, in addition, overall, ultimately, the jurisdiction of the unincorporated area is shrinking by way of city annexations. City of, um, Gardner and Edgerton have also had some very large annexations recently. So as part of that, that reason, and in looking at just in general, some total case, uh, number of applications being considered by all those zoning boards, there are currently three zoning boards, as you know, in, in the unincorporated area, Northwest, Southwest, and Southeast. In the total, looking at this, there's a request by the, the board and, uh, kind of manager's office for us to begin looking at the composition in the, in the zoning boards. We did some basic analysis and provided an update at that committee of the whole meeting. Planning and legal staff prepared a, a summary and a presentation. So looking at that, just as a general comparison, when we combined all the total number of cases for the Northwest area and the Southwest area, they were about equal to the total number of cases for the Southeast zoning board area, so just as a comparison. So the, the decision, and that's looking over the past five years or so. Uh, so there was a recommendation to consider a consolidation of the Northwest area and the Southwest zoning boards, and that was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting. We had some, um, presentation we provided at that time, the, the board members asked questions about it. The basic thought being what would be recommended would be for consolidation of the Northwest and Southwest zoning boards to recreate a new West zoning board, and then we would rename the Southeast zoning board the East zoning board. So that, uh, that change would result in a new zoning board for the West being just seven members. So currently, the Southwest zoning board has nine members, as you know. So the new board would have seven, which is consistent with both the current memberships of the Northwest and Southeast zoning boards. In addition to the creation of this new board, uh, there would also be a change in the process for nominations and appointments of the new board members. Basically, they would still remain the same in terms of the, the members would be, uh, residents of the, and owners in the unincorporated area of the respective townships. So if, uh, this new zoning board would be created, it would include Lexington Township in the Northwest area, along with McCamish and Gardner, uh, townships, and, and portion of the Olafah Township that is not within the, the City of Olafah. So those townships would still remain the same, the members would still have to be residents of the township. But one change that would be recommended would be that there would be no automatic, uh, appointment of a trustee. Uh, a trustee of a township could still be a zoning board member, but it wouldn't be an automatic right of first refusal. So the thought being, uh, when, when there's consolidation, it tends to make it more difficult, or there could be complications with, with having an automatic, uh, township trustee as part of that zoning board. So the proposal would be for just a seven-member board, maybe residents of those respective townships, and that the, the board members be nominated by the respective district commissioner and the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. It'd be a split, that, that hasn't been decided yet for the total number, but it'd be a combination of both the district commissioner and the, uh, the Board of County Commissioner Chairman to make appointments or make nominations and appointments to the, the board. Then the Board of County Commissioners as a whole would vote on the, the board members, just as they do today. Uh, so that's the, the general, uh, overview of the proposed, uh, discussion for consolidation and board appointments. This item will be scheduled for a hearing at the June fifteenth Board of County Commissioners meeting. So that's when it would be effectively, if they, the board approves this, that's when the, the decision would be made. There have been no details yet set for when it would become effective. There's some logistics that would be involved, obviously, there would be a new board created, we'd have to go through a new calendar, a new schedule, and then new board member appointments. So that would come later, after it's all been decided and, and set. But the, we'll be providing more information and updates as we get them, following that meeting on June fifteenth. But, um, we're happy to answer any questions at this time that you have, and again, we'll be providing updates following that public hearing in June fifteenth.
Yeah, Terry Atwell, I have some questions.
Okay.
I'll be the first to go, because you know I'm always outspoken. Uh, how's the breakdown, um, gonna work? Are you, are they, are they gonna take so many from each township to place on the board? Are they gonna, sorry, are they gonna stack them from one township as in, then not have any from another township? Uh, like, I kind of need to know how that's gonna work.
Uh, Sean Penley, planning staff, that's a very good question, uh, thank you, Terry. Um, we, you know, I asked that question too, just of legal staff, we, I don't think that's been decided yet. Uh, absolutely, the members will have to be from the respective township, so we will have to have, the members will have to be, be residents of one of those townships or all of them, hopefully. Ideally, you would have representatives from each township, but it all depends on the nominations and the, the, the process, the, the appointment process. I don't think that that's been decided yet, so really it kind of depends on where we get volunteers that are willing to serve, and then where they're decided. I think ideally, of course, you would want to have a member of each township on that zoning board. But I, and I, I believe, uh, Bob Four with our legal staff is also on Zoom, hopefully still, he is still on here, and maybe he might have more information to share with us, but I don't think that's been decided yet, exactly.
Well, they, they need to decide that before, to me, that should have been decided before bringing it, bringing it to the zoning boards, because if you're gonna have four separate townships, and you're only gonna have seven, you know, board members, you're gonna, it, it's gonna be, um, I mean, you, you could have all seven members from, from one, one township. What, what I'm trying to prevent, and I'm sure that my fellow board members will back me up on this. Um, you know, Southwest Consolidated is very property owner, uh, friendly. We advocate for our property owners, which is, you know, why I'm so outspoken. What I don't want to have happen, uh, because Northwest, in my opinion, uh, doesn't necessarily always have the backs of their property owners, and they don't put property rights first. I don't want our citizens in McCamish Township and Gardner Township to suffer um, if the division wasn't, you know, done the way I would like to see it done. That's my concern, um, you know, about this whole division. Uh, I'm good with the seven members, but I really want to see how they're going to divide those up per township before I feel like I could, um, you know, totally get behind what they want to do.
Uh, certainly, um, we will pass along those comments to legal staff and county management office. We'll be, again, making a presentation at June fifteenth meeting, and that is a public hearing, so anyone is welcome to attend, including any board members, uh, but that's a good comment. I know it's, uh, like I said, I think the reason why it hasn't been specifically outlined is because we don't know yet who would all be on the board, you know, who's, these boards. But it definitely, the members need to be people from those townships. I just don't think there's a set number from each particular township set at this time, but we'll certainly pass that along as a good, good comment.
Cooper, I, I actually watched the, that entire meeting last night. And, yeah, the way they left the proposal at this point, but obviously can be modified, was that, uh, you know, for this new board, Commissioner Alabran would have four votes, and the chair would have three, and none of that was defined, of course, where, where those members should come from. It was just kind of open, I guess.
I think that's right, yeah, the non, both, uh, nominations, the actual number of appointments who are made by who, and, uh, where they may reside is yet to be determined, you know.
Brian Walker, Ellen Brand's been a strong proponent of us. I'm, I'm not too concerned if she has four votes.
And I will say too, just to add to that, so the, uh, these two boards, Northwest and Southwest, are both in the sixth districts of currently Commissioner Allen Brand's district. She would be appointing, um, or assuming this is done while it's still in this current, uh, period of her, her term, uh, there would be all the appointments that she, she would have for that district, made by her, and then the, whatever number would be by the chairman, and, and it will, all, all the members be, uh, up for a vote and approval by the entire board.
John, John DeGrande.
I, I think I personally would be more inclined to support a nine-member as opposed to a seven-member board. I mean, as experienced tonight, sometimes it's hard, there's people, people have things that they got to do. You know, it seems like it's inevitable that one or two people are unavailable about every month. And I think that would also make it easier to get people from each township on the board. It would be more even split.
Yeah, Brian Walker, and if they did that, then I'd recommend two from each township. I mean, it's not our say, but I'm just saying, if, if they're asking our opinion.
And I will note too that currently the, the the regulations and, and our statutes outline the options for seven versus nine. It's, um, it is open anywhere from five members to nine members for a zoning board. So that's still to be determined what the actual number will be, but what was proposed was seven. But again, that's certainly something we can share with, with, uh,
A quorum requires four?
With a seven-member board, a quorum is four, with a nine, it's five, yeah. So it's a, there's some different pros and cons for each, and yeah, the, right now, the Southwest zoning board is the only board with nine members. The, uh, Northwest and Southeast both have seven members.
Yeah, Jason Cooper, in, in watching that meeting, it looked like they were trying to, uh, mod, because the Southeast board is a, you know, was consolidated in, what was it, twenty seventeen?
That's right.
Um, from Aubrey Oxford and is that Central?
South Central.
South Central, yeah, and so they're using that pretty much as the model to, you know, do this new board and have it be consistent.
Brian Walker, feel free to start paying us and you can get more board members.
Right.
Be no problem.
Right, and we, and we do appreciate our board members for their volunteer and their, their time, because we know it is.
Yeah, Terry Atwell, again, so Aubrey Oxford, are, are there only two zoning districts that make that up?
Uh, townships.
Townships, yes, sir.
Yes. It's primarily just Aubrey Township at this point, Oxford's very small, so, yeah, oh, I believe there might be a portion of the Spring Hill Township in there as well, so actually there are, yeah.
Okay. Right, so see, it, it, if you're, if you only have, if, uh, that one is so tiny, you're basically splitting between two townships, then seven positions. But when you double that to four, um, I'm fine with the seven, as long as the division is made up equally, so that one township is not, uh, left, um, you know, without some say-so in this, when something comes before their board.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's, I mean, that's my only concern, is that if you have it lopsided, and you have four townships, and say you only have one, one member or no members from a township, um, because the appointments were done in, in, you know, such a way, I just want to make sure that, um, specifically, you know, McCamish Township is not, uh, left without representation, because we have a very good diverse group of people that are from McCamish Township currently on our board.
Sounds good, we'll be happy to share any of these comments with the, the board, the meeting on June fifteenth. And any other questions or comments, certainly feel free to forward them to planning staff, and we'll be happy to share those. All right.
Just happy to find out I didn't just get fired.
No, absolutely not, we, uh, we want to keep our board members as they are right now, for sure, at least as long as this board is still in effect. We, uh, and seriously, we, staff does appreciate our board members, because I, I think I mentioned this, um, if not at that committee of the whole meeting, in other meetings of Planning Commission, we, we appreciate all of our boards, because, uh, we understand, and I, I think I was, actually, now I remember, I was speaking at a, uh, Johnson County Academy, uh, presentation we had recently, and there were just members of the public who wanted to know about the county business, and I talked about for our portion for planning, how much we appreciate our board members, because it really does help us conduct our business, and without board members, we wouldn't be able to have these actions in, in our meetings. So we, we really do appreciate all your time and effort and involvement in the board meetings.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other business from the board? None, okay. Then, uh, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. John DeGrande moved to adjourn.
Brian Walker, second.
Okay, we have a motion from John, and second from Brian, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, we are adjourned.